Yeah, I just started.
Time? What's your time?
Not according to my satellite clock, but that old clock maybe.
Mine a little, mine, it's a couple more minutes.
Yeah.
I am right at the end of my supervisor matters. I've got it written on here.
Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. Join me in the flag salute and during our moment of silence, let's remember Mike Yandell that we lost last week, Sergeant in our Sheriff's Department.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Okay, we'll start the meeting out with our Supervisor Matters, Supervisor Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis, I appreciate that. Also, I know that in our moment of silence, we were asked to remember Sergeant Yandell, but our thoughts and prayers do definitely go out to his family during this difficult time. I should sure appreciate his service to not only his, the Sheriff's Department, but to the men and women that he worked with as the Deputy Sheriff's Association President. Couple of events I wanted to make sure I mentioned this week that are taking place. The International AgriCenter has a program called Ag Ventures and their annual fundraiser is taking place on Friday. It is a golf tournament and that is followed by a farm-to-table dinner that they're inviting people to buy tickets to and support their program. On Saturday, I get to do something for the first time, and I've never done it before, and I'm kind of curious how it turns out, and I don't really know how I was even asked to do it. But I will be an auctioneer at the Wine and Wags fundraiser for the Valley Oaks SPCA. That takes place on Saturday evening from 6:30 to 9:30 at a private residence near the country club. So I look forward to supporting that organization, and I hope that they don't stop me in the middle of the auction and just ask me to leave. Next, I wanted to also mention that on Monday at 10:00 a.m. in Farmersville, there is a public hearing for, I believe it's the official formation of the Greater Cuias Groundwater Sustainability Agency. That is going to be taking place, and I hope that that will be well attended and we get that process off and running. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Cox.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to counsel Supervisor Vanderpool here to not, you know, lead us on like that when he says he's been asked to do something he couldn't do. I thought, well, he's gonna run a race in high heels. No, wait, he's done that. He's gonna walk a runway with a purse. No, wait, he's done that.
Well, if I talked to the, to the mayor, to Larry, give him some pointers.
Yeah, he's a world champion.
Okay, well, thank you for listening to my 30 seconds of an attempt at humor. Last week, did attend the Wednesday evening, the Good News Jail Ministry event. There were probably 500 people there supporting our, our ministry that goes out and reaches out to people in our jails. Last Thursday, attended the Latinas in Education event at the Marriott Hotels, all well-attended. There were probably 250 or so people there, and there were, it was really nice to recognize some Latinas here in our community who have done really well, who've set good examples for kids in their communities. Tonight, there's a Visalia Chamber of Commerce After Hours event, Central Valley Collision over my old neck of the woods on, off of Asequia. And then Thursday evening at 6:30, there's a Candidates Forum at the Veterans Memorial Building as for city council and school district candidates, and I'll be attending that on the stage this time.
Thank you, Chairman. Last week, we had an organizing meeting for the London premier opening of the Tulare County's newest library, which will be October 15th. I want to ask you to put that on your calendars, 11 o'clock in the morning. We are going to have the, State Librarian will be in attendance at this event, and it's a major, major event in the community of London. Friday, we had a Pension Task Force meeting with, which is Supervisor Cox and I sit on, along with a subset of the Retirement Board, to talk about opportunities that the county might have in, in our pension plan. And so we'll be having some work done on that right away to give us some scenarios of what would be some options for us to take that might take advantage of that discrepancy between, well, the market, fair market value of money in terms of borrowing, the discount rate on the, on the market versus what we pay the Retirement Board. Last year we paid, or this year we paid the Retirement Board $20 million in interest, so it's a significant sum of money. This week, Supervisor Ashida and I will be attending the Rural County Caucus Conference, and we have, we have many things in common with the rural counties of Tulare County. From, in county world, we are actually considered a suburban county. It might surprise many people when we think about being an agricultural county, but we are on the basis of population a suburban county. But we find we have many things in common with the rural counties of California, which there are very many. And I think that's about all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Ashida.
Last Wednesday, I attended the California Freight Advisory Committee meeting in Los Angeles, representing the Eight Valley Association of Governments. They had one presenter that talked about, we had an economist, and he talked about the future and what's happened in the past. But he mentioned something that really took me back, is that in the last several years and this robust recovery we had from the recession, it's only been about 2% growth a year. And he stated that that would probably be the new norm. Well, I can assure you, a 2% growth in the GNP every year will never pay back the $20 trillion in debt that we have. So I think he was probably trying to bolster the current administration when he said the new norm is 2%. On Thursday, Supervisor Cox and I have attended a function for the Board of Realtors. On Friday, I attended the Southern California Edison Latino Heritage Month celebration at Edison's AgTech. And on Monday, I attended, last, yesterday evening, I attended the 4H Awards banquet at the Ag Commissioner's Office. It surprised me when we got down to the end of the agenda, it stated Mr. Mike Ennis and Diane Ennis was getting a service award for 30 years supporting the 4H program. I see this in many of the town hall meetings that we have, is that it's not the Board of Supervisors to make communities, it's people who give their time to these different organizations. They're the ones that really set the culture of their community. So hats off to Supervisor Ennis and his wife Diane for all those years working with the 4H. Saturday, we have the Lindsay Menudal Cook-Off. Supervisor Ennis knows I'll be there. And the last thing I have is, under a moment of silence, we should keep the UCLA football team in mind.
Oh, that was great. He didn't, he didn't want to hear that this morning.
Oh, I didn't want to hear that. You know, they, they do say that UCLA is the best two-loss team in the entire country, I will say that, but go ahead.
Well, you know, they did a pretty good job until that last quarter.
I know, last 24 seconds. Thanks for, thanks for rubbing salt in the woods.
And you know who I was pulling for.
Hey, my son was even wearing his UCLA jersey too, dang.
Okay, thank you. Last week, we had the J Street Bridge groundbreaking in Porterville, and if you've ever been to Porterville, you've got four lanes coming in from Highway 190, and you've got four lanes coming past the high school, and then you get right there to Riverwalk Shopping Center, and your two lanes to go across the river, what a bottleneck. So this has been a long time coming, and so looking forward to getting that, because that'll help with the circulation in the Porterville area, and of course, that's where I live. But looking forward to getting that done. I, I went to the, was at the 4H Awards last night, and it was, it was nice to, to get that award, but you know, it's enjoyable. I don't, you know, I've enjoyed my years working with these 4H kids, and, and I've got three granddaughters right now that are, that are showing 4H, so great program, and, and those kids that are involved in that, if you enjoy, especially if you're involved in a beef program, that's year-round. I mean, you're, the minute you sell a beef, you've already out looking to buy another one to start for the next year, so what a great program, and, and what a great program for the kids, and a lot of those kids end going and become FFA kids, Future Farmers of America, so it's a great program. Before I get out of my Supervisor Matters this morning, I'd like to introduce to you, and maybe Benjamin will come up to the microphone here, I know he, he's not a man of a lot of words, he's kind of like me. Benjamin Reese was our interim RMA Director, and now we have appointed him as our Director of Resource Management Agency. Benjamin, welcome.
Well, thank you, Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Spada and County Council. Deeply honored and humbled by the appointment, and we at RMA look forward to continuing our business-friendly attitude, implementing your board's adopted strategic goals, and working with the CAO's office to do our part to grow the pie by completing our public works projects, and again, continuing with that business, business-friendly attitude, streamlining private land entitlements, and getting our building permits processed, so thank you once again.
Thank you. We have all the confidence in the world, as you know, it was a 5-0 vote to put you in that position, so we have all the confidence in the world in you.
Thank you.
Good job, Ben.
Mr. Chairman? Someone left their coffee at my desk, and it's getting cold. Mr. Chairman, well, I, I forgot to mention that last, last Saturday was the world-renowned Raisin Day Festivals in Dinuba, and I, I wanted to thank Chief Norman for providing us with Fire, Fire Engine Number One, and, and driving me through the parade route, and it was, it was a beautiful day and a great crowd. And you know, I, I just, it just, I'm just really taken by the fact that at Raisin Day, and like when we were in Tulare for the, for the Tulare Parade, large crowds of people, but you know what? I don't think there was any problems, I'm not aware of any problems from a standpoint of criminal behavior or bad behavior. I mean, it was just family fun, people coming out, having a great time, and it's just, it's great to see that, when we have so much bad news in the world, to actually be able to look in our communities and see people can come together of all types and colors and races and ethnicities, and just have a great time together. And so just, it was a good, good day last Saturday, I wanted to mention that, thank you.
I thought maybe you were gonna bring up the fact that Dinuba blew Porterville out of the ballpark.
Oh, my gosh!
That was pathetic, wasn't it? I thought that's why you wanted to stop, you wanted to come back and, and kind of bash me a little bit, but no, I appreciate that.
I appreciate you taking care of performance.
That was your moment of silence.
Brathmore, 4-0? Brathmore High School, 4-0, so boy, at least we got one school in our area that's doing fairly well. Okay, that does it for Supervisor Matters. Now, we will move on to item number two, recognize Jeanne Warren, Human Services Unit Director, HSSA, on her retirement, many years, and I looked it up, 42 years. 42 years, wow, that's quite an accomplishment, and so Laura Silva's gonna get up and say a few words.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, Supervisors, Mr. Spada, County Council. It is my honor to recognize such a humble employee with 42 years of service, it's hard to wrap your hand, head around that. Jeanne has always done what is right and not what's easy, and that comes to being highly, highly dedicated to program integrity, being compassionate to the clients, and a cheerleader to her staff. She's extremely dedicated to Tulare County with probably the highest work ethic I've ever come to know. Thank you, Jeanne, for setting the standard high and setting the expectations high and being a mentor to me and all of our team. You'll leave behind a legacy, and you will be missed. Her retirement is so well-deserved, and I thank you for your 42-year commitment, but now it's time for you to enjoy your family and for you to find your little bungalow somewhere by the sea. Thank you.
Thank you for all your years of, of service, and you will be missed. What did you start, when you were 10 years old? What's the deal here? Yeah. I know, you look, you look great, but... Thank you for all your years of service, and congratulations to you, and good luck to you in the future, and enjoy your retirement. You deserve it, you certainly do.
You know, there's been some real challenging times, I won't deny that, and it takes a lot of perseverance, but I've worked with some wonderful people who've been very supportive.
That's quite an accomplishment. There are very few people who stay in a profession or a job for 42 years. In fact, Supervisor Vanderpool's mother was in grammar school when she started.
So you're gonna attack my mom now? But, but Jeanne, congratulations, what a career, that's absolutely incredible. You, you were working for 10 years before I was born, and I remember, I remember. We were, we were black and silver in color, I remember, see? See? We go way back. But no, really, what, what, what a great career, 42 years, what a commitment to the county, and clearly, it wasn't just a job for you, that you came to work each day, did your work and went home. You came to work and you made an impact on those that you worked with. You're leaving behind certainly a trail of excellence for those who you mentored and those who are behind you to follow, and I thank you for your commitment to Tulare County, and I always like to say, may the best years of your life be ahead of you. Not sure where the bungalow by the sea will be, don't, don't forget, don't forget Tulare or Tulare County, be sure to come back and keep helping this county be the great place that it is and that you've made it be for 42 years, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeanne, good luck to you. Okay, item number three is off for today, will be brought back at a later date, they didn't have their program put together. So now we'll go to public comment. I do have one person that's filled out a slip for me, Pedro Hernandez, Community Choice Energy. Pedro? Yeah, pull that mic around there.
Yeah, no, there's two I had to...
No, that's fine.
Yes, so, good morning, everyone, hello over here. Yeah. Okay, I will move. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
It's like those old Verizon commercials, you know?
If you're wearing the wrong color for that.
Yes, okay, so, good morning, everybody, my name is Pedro Hernandez, I work for the Clean Power Exchange, and I'm here to talk to you about Community Choice Energy. This is a local nonprofit program where local city councils and local entities will control their, the buying and selling of renewable cleaner energy. So I'd like to talk to you in these three minutes, two and a half minutes, about three points. First of all, like I said, I kind of touched on it, it's a local nonprofit program that buys and sells electricity, and it is currently in operation in five different counties and cities. And in each one of those five different entities, Clean Power Exchange is offering cheaper and cleaner renewable energy that is benefiting not only businesses, but the residents in those communities as well. So number two, how exactly this program benefits businesses and residents? First of all, businesses and residents are able to sell energy back into the grid for a credit on their bills or for their other utilities. Again, this is producing through solar energy and various other renewable sources, cleaner energy that is not only better for the environment, but I, I mean, I think it'd be fair to say that there's probably not one person in this room that know, that doesn't know someone with asthma in the valley. So this is something particularly suitable for the valley climate as well. With Tulare Solar Center, farms going, switching to solar energy, programs like grid alternatives, providing solar energy to low-income houses, there definitely is already an infrastructure, and there is a, you know, private citizen movement and community movement as well that is looking forward to a solar transition in the valley. Let's see, second point, yes, something more tangible is Lancaster Choice Energy in SoCal. By 2018, you know, their entire bus fleet is gonna be electric. I was there at the Visalia City Council meeting last week, and they were talking about their long-distance transit plans, and Visalia is currently planning on being all-electric tentatively, tentatively by like 2040. So there are programs that are making significantly more strides for their business and environmental climate. Also, we actually did release several news releases, and most of the major news outlets that did highlight a community survey were over two-thirds of the populations in Tulare and Visalia. County and city proper did want some sort of choice and renewable energy for their own climate. And this is a big deal because, three times up, but you know, I hope we can try to benefit everyone here and solve a climate problem in businesses. This is something that does promise it, we have economic analysis of San Jose that is available for your viewing, and you know, possibly we can be in contact, you have my card, and you have some stories.
Pedro, is this, do you go out and actually put solar on houses and stuff, your company or what do you do?
Okay, yes, so we do not install, we work with private enterprises and other organizations. This is enabled also by federal funding, so there is plenty of funding in addition to supplement the private enterprises and other programs that cities are pushing, like the Tulare Solar Center, or farmers with their own pumping, or their own solar infrastructure for their water pumps and the like.
I, I had been contacted by the folks from this organization, and a number of years ago, Tulare County actually looked to pursue something like this through the Kings River Conservation District. At that time, it was a natural gas-powered plant. It came under tremendous attack by the local utility company, PG&E, and so it never really went anywhere, but as I was approached by this, I said, you know, the key thing, I think, for us in Tulare County, we don't really have much in the way of power generation in our county, but would be cost. So if this offered, provided an opportunity for our residents to be able to buy their power at a lower cost than what they would be buying it from a standard utility company, I think that would be the big selling point for Tulare County, and so that was the point I made to them, and I think it'd be good for us to, you know, to have a kind of an evaluation of this program and whether or not it would work and fit with Tulare County.
Yeah, we also, we're in communication with all the active Community Choice Energy Agencies, and some of the officials and some of the mayors have already, you know, given me permission to kind of offer their services for a talk or for some sort of Q&amp;A session, so if you're interested, you have my card there. We've been in contact, I've been contacting you, most of you. So now you can see the face and my long hair, so please don't forget me.
All right, thanks, Pedro. Anybody else wishing to speak during public comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comment and pick up our consent calendar.
Chairman, I would like, Chairman, I would like to just to take off 16 for purpose of note, just to speak about it, I have no, no, I want, I mean, it's fine with being the consent calendar, but I just wanted, but I just wanted to commend our staff for the letter that they had prepared to comment on the Sequoia National Forest Plan. There are three forest plans being promulgated at the same time, Sierra, Inyo, and Sequoia, and what we have recommended is, not what the preferred alternative is, but one which is a more aggressive management on the national forest. We are living today with the results of passive management, you know, the fact that we have not been managing our forests is why we have these huge wildfires, why we have so many dead trees, I mean, we've got a drought, there's no question about the drought's influence on this, but it is the lack of management and the overpopulation of brush and trees on the forest which has led to what we now see as entire, you know, hillsides completely dead. And so I really appreciated our letter, and I also think honestly, they need to go back and start this whole process over, because, and that was a part of our letter as well, because the whole baseline of what the forest was supposed to have been like when they, when they did this plan, no longer exists. It's a thing of the past, it no longer, it's not there. We don't have the forest that this plan was designed to, to guard against or protect what they were gonna do. But I just, again, I want to appreciate the staff's work on this, and you know, whether or not we're gonna be able to do something, I, I, you know, I know we, we still deal with tree mortality and we need to continue doing that, but I'm looking now to the future. What are we gonna do in the future? How are we gonna manage these forests? And I hope we are learning our, we're learning a lesson here about the pitfalls of a passive management system, which is what we've been doing for a number of years.
And you got the monument, and they won't let us even touch it, so I agree with you. Okay, if nothing further, then nobody wants to pull any more items off, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of the consent calendar.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool. Seconded by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes, votes unanimous, thank you. Okay, we will move on to our items not timed. Item 19, presentation and report given by the Fire Department. Chief?
Morning.
Busy guy, huh?
You know, it has been. I'm looking forward to a little bit of snowfall.
A little lot of snowfall.
Good morning, Board, CAO, this is Bales Lang. I'd like to give you a brief update on the Cedar Fire, and this should take approximately 11 minutes and 45 seconds, my section of it, really informative. This was a significant incident to Tulare County. I think we really stepped up, all agencies, all departments within the county, as well as the citizenry of the mountain communities. August, this has been an extremely busy fire season, is the quote-unquote new normal, which seems to be affecting resources throughout the state and all western United States. On August 16th, we were dispatched to the Cedar Fire, started in Kern County in the Cedar Creek Campground area, just north of Highway 155. Very early in the incident, we were able to take a look at it, we had some initial resources because we, ironically, we had a resource leaving the Sobranas Fire going to the Blue Cut Fire in Southern California and was diverted to this incident, so we did have Tulare County involved almost after initial attack. For 72 hours, looking up there at the column, what we had, it looked that it was going to impact on Tulare County. Chief McLaughlin and I drove up there early in the incident on the evening of the 16th, communicated with the management... 16th, uh, communicated with the management team, and saw that, uh, you know, Houston, we do have a problem. Uh, we had areas of torching, areas of spots, uh, that were significant, and it looked like, uh, impact was imminent for Tulare County. So, we did dispatch a, a task force to the Posey area, and we started thinking about a soft opening of the EOC. Um, on August 18th, the fire moved into Tulare County. Ironically, we had our Highway 190 meeting that morning with Mr. Ennis, and, um, we saw a large looming cloud, and, um, it was like having adult ADHD during the meeting. Okay, I need to answer this question, but my phone is blowing up. Okay, and when I do have reception, okay, the station phone's ringing now, I have radio traffic. So, obviously, the urgency of that incident wasn't pitting upon Tulare County. Uh, we did send, at that point, an additional five engines, an agency representative, as well as a battalion chief, so we wanted to make sure, based on the first 400 to 4,000 acres overnight, we wanted to make sure that we had good involvement in the agency plan and the Forest Service plan. So, at that point, we have, in the first 72 hours, 45 personnel, eight engines, two water tenders, and five patrols, and multiple utility vehicles. Uh, with the activity in the area, they were just clearing the Erskine Fire, so we did have some logistical support that wasn't there in the first 72 hours of the incident, so, I, I think we really bucked up, um, our personnel dug in, realized we had some tremendous structure threats in the area, and, um, really dug in and did a great job without logistical support for the first three days of this incident. Friday the 19th, everything went from bad to worse. What we had was a fuel-driven fire that kept backing into the Posey area and the Panorama Heights area. Um, we had significant structure threats. Um, I remember talking to Mr. Spotta that morning, saying that, uh, the crews all have golf ball eyes, which is that cartoon look, oh my god, it's gonna get us. They're at the station, they're pulling the flags, they're evacuating the station area, and they're going to the area around the dump for an area of safe refuge. Um, I talked to the, uh, division chief that was on that, uh, operational division, and he said he had, um, embers the size of chairs coming down at the station. So, when you think of embers the size of chairs, we had s- a significant impact, and fire was imminent. Eventually, we had a wind shift, that backed down, and they were able to make a stand at that fire station, save our station as well as the community. On, uh, the week of August 22nd, uh, things went from bad to worse. Um, we had the Tooley Fire breakout up on Highway 190. Uh, initial reports were there was an upslope fire, rapid rate of spread. Uh, through the EOC, that we had the EOC already involved, uh, we started some, uh, voluntary evacuations to make sure everything was there. Blessing and a curse took some of our resources off of the Cedar Fire, but we were able to get air support into that incident early after initial attack. Um, on the 23rd, we called that under control at about 400 acres. So, then, we started getting back to our primary mission of the Cedar Fire. As with everything that's been going this year, we have this tree mortality area. As you look around the red area, look around this red area right here, everything in there is significant mortality. We have significant bug killer areas, and the highest concentrations, uh, are evidenced in the body in the main, uh, area of the fire. Uh, with some of this burning, we thought that, okay, this is gonna eradicate some of our tree mortality issues. Unfortunately, we had a lot of understory burn, we had areas of crowning and torching, but it did not eradicate our issue.
What you're saying is there's still more to burn.
There may be a couple more out there, Mr. Worley. Over the next several days, we continued to make steady progress on the fire. Normally, again, with the large fuels and the mortality, you would assume this fire to burn clean, but that wasn't the case, we had to do some very, very slow backfiring operation in Panorama Heights, um, with all our air support in there, getting our hotspots, um, it was very slow-going, and what you would normally see done in, uh, 12 to 36-hour operational period, took us five, six days to get done. And here's the summary, and I'll go through this, and then I'll go, go through a brief pictorial, and we'll still be on our time target. Um, August 30th, we started releasing resources. We were at 29,322 acres, um, we had five cabins lost in the Spear Creek summer camp area, and seven outbuildings. Um, ironically, with the structure threats that we had out there, including the fire station, this is amazing that our losses are so low. And all evacuation orders were lifted by September 1st, with the exception of Spear Creek. And we closed the EOC on September 2nd at 12:08 and 42 seconds. It was an extremely lengthy 17 days, and, uh, it, but it was a great experience, and we had got some great things done. The night of 17th, this is what Chief McLaughlin and I saw as we got up there. Uh, minimal resources up there, a few Type 3s, we had a Type 3 from Tulare County, uh, they hadn't even dispatched air support or hotshots yet, so, thus the, uh, 400 to 4,000-acre jump in fire, so that was of grave concern.
That is on the ridge of Panorama Heights. This is from the dump on, uh, No. 9.
First was not in there from effect, he was afraid to. But that is from the, uh, uh, refuge area, that is when we evacuated the station and moved all the equipment, uh, from the Panorama Heights area. Uh, multiple resources, aircraft, the DC-10s, uh, we had up there, uh, DC-10 drops around 12,000 gallons per drop. Uh, the old C-130s only dropped around 5,000, so in this day and age, we have a lot more air support. Uh, the S-61s dropped between 500 and 600 gallons, and the Scoop, Super Scoopers up to 1200, 1200 gallons. So, we did have some significant resources. With the fire travel on this, we had what are called spot fires out in front of the fires, and some of those would be, uh, normally you see spotting a quarter mile, half mile away, we had spotting a mile in front of the fire, and we used the aircraft to pick these up. Uh, we didn't go into unified command on this, but, uh, due to some of our past relationships with the Kern County Fire Department, having a great relationship with them, great relationship with the CAL FIRE, and working on a relationship with Forest Service, uh, we were able to move forward with some great, uh, incident plans after the first 72 hours, uh, as we worked side-by-side together. Air support in this, this is coming down, this is probably two miles from the Panorama Heights area. Without that air support, with the tree mortality, this area would have all been gone. The short drop on that DC-10 looks like he didn't leave much on there, that was probably a 3,000-gallon drop. He was coming around from the Blue Cut Fire, and he said, hey, I've got some, can I stop by? And he was really able to make, uh, a, a great impact on the Balance Rock area. Um, as we go through some of our basic training, uh, FOZ check, the byproduct that they drop from aircraft is a slimy red, water weighs 8.3 pounds per gallon, you put FOZ check in it, it gets about nine pounds per gallon. When it hits things, it displaces things. As you go through your basic firefighter training, when you see an air drop coming, you grab your helmet, you put your tool at your side, and then you grab a boulder or a tree or something else that you think you could stand up, uh, it will help you stand up. So, uh, very, very important, uh, obviously, we painted a few county vehicles. Sorry, Mr. Spotta, we got those blinded right away. Here's, again, the significant burning down into this area, and once you look at fires for a while, it's almost like looking at pictures of snow, you don't realize just how big it is. And here is our, uh, day on the 19th, where it looked like, uh, fire, uh, was imminent in the Panorama Heights area. As we got a knockdown on the head of this fire coming into the Panorama Heights, we really had to worry about it sneaking around the east side of the Posey Fire Station. So, again, the slow burning and being able to backfire in that area, uh, really kept us out of trouble, and it, it was a good testament to us working with the hotshots, uh, the Forest Service crews, and getting things done on this incident. Again, a shot from the dump, looking at Peel Ridge on the 18th, uh, prior to the siege that hit us on the 19th, and then the Panorama Heights on our siege on the 19th. Backburning, once the wind stopped, uh, you could tell the difference in the wind based on the smoke column, the inversion layer, uh, we were able to get some handle, get some air strikes in on that. Uh, this is one of our extra help firefighters' house, uh, Mike LaHargue, so he was, I think you can see him yelling on the porch there. But, again, some of those early resources really helped us in the incident. Again, additional backfiring to save that operation in Panorama Heights. Um, Mr. Sheeter rode up with me one day, the small, uh, pond by the YMCA camp, this where we were able to put the Bell 212 in there and get some smaller air support that was much more rapid and helped us with the hotspot extinguishment. Sugarlo Village, uh, again, uh, combined resources, having some hotshot and air support in there really helped us, uh, save that community. Flight operations, once you get a lay of the land, um, it's very hazardous to fly aircraft with a fire at night, uh, with a significant threat, and it, it sounds a lot like what you always have to hear it a few times, but we are so very, very fortunate that we had the training and the resources, or we would be doing the same or we'd have a structural loss. Well, you can't say enough about the courageous acts by some of our, um, air support, getting there, staying there, getting those operations done at night, where we could have the fuel recoveries at night, where we could extinguish the fire. Um, I want to thank everybody that was involved in this. Uh, the CAO was, uh, Mr. Spotta was in the, uh, EOC as much as I was, if not more. And without that support, leadership always starts at the top. Appreciate your efforts in, uh, uh, getting everything done, and it was a, truly a team effort, but again, leadership does start at the top. Uh, the sheriff, uh, unbelievable help with evacuations, having these relationships in place before our incident, it, it's so helpful, it helped us keep everybody safe. Uh, Ben Reese, some Army folks, uh, road closures, logistics, it's, uh, we had, um, some great things in place prior to the incident. HSA, they were there with us every step of the way, as well as Andrew's crew, the Office of Emergency Services, um, animal control, uh, the purchasing department, it was very, uh, these incidents, as you had the logistical, the lack of logistical support on the incident, we had, uh, feedings in the EOC that were very, very regular. So, nobody was weak in any way during the process. Uh, the public information officers, Tammy, Carrie, uh, when a gentleman from the DA's office, as well as the fire department, uh, did a great job working together, getting the message out, keeping us in front of people. And the Posey Extra Help firefighters, they provided some logistical support at the station level, we had no water, um, no food, uh, those, uh, that community continues to amaze me. They're very vocal, Mr. and Mrs., but they do a great job.
Yeah, yeah.
And all of Tulare County residents, uh, I've been invited, my staff's been invited to so many, uh, RRF's community events since this happened, it's just, it's great to really feel appreciated. There's our crews coming back, uh, again, the 40 resources, we had the two task forces, the one strike team, and then the OES Type 3 Strike Team, and there's the flags going back up at the Posey Fire Station. So significant. August 19th, thought we were gonna lose that station. First thing that's clear to my mind, okay, everybody's out, everybody's safe, that's great, okay. Chief Sonderland, Chief Garcia, never lost a station during an emergency. If you'd like lending service to others, it's worth living. Albert Einstein. Great team effort, uh, proud to be part of the Tulare County family, and appreciate all your efforts at the Board and CAO. Uh, we'll be answering any questions at this time.
But it's a great job, chief, and, and I think that you guys also did a good job when we had the meeting down there with the folks from Hot Springs area, and letting them know what was going on. Lot of, lot of events going on that, since this thing started, but, great job, have to hand it off, great job by you, you're creating everything and working with everybody. Thank you. You have the comments from the board, or?
Yeah, I would, I'd like, uh, comment about the performance of our Tulare County Fire Department. It was excellent. And the foresight that the department had, and the leadership we had in that fire, uh, doing the backfires and the work that they did, did save those communities. And I also like to commend not only the hotshots and the Forest Service, but it was a well-run operation. Uh, the one thing that I've noticed about forest fires, being involved in a couple, Supervisor Worley says, well, it looks like we'll be back, or there may be potential for another fire. When you look at that smoke, not all the trees are burning, so, it's patchy. You get in a fire, and it's patchy. If it's savanna fire, usually it runs a straight line, or a pretty straight line, and burns everything. But when you get into timber, even though they're dead, it's just real patchy, and I think because of the way they attacked this fire with the spot fires, putting the spot fires out, those spot fires could have consolidated into one huge fire. So, we're safe, we saved the communities this year, and I think they'll be in good shape for years to come based on what happened, but the areas away from the communities are ripe for another fire. And I've, I've mentioned many times in different meetings, especially RCRC meetings, the only way this tree mortality issue's gonna go away is they're gonna have to burn. And just because those trees burn, do not mean that they fall to the ground. A lot of these stands are, will be standing there for a year or two before they do hit the ground. The outsides may be burnt, the crowns may be gone, but those trees are still there. So, I want to really commend, uh, Tulare County Fire Department.
Sherman, I did have a chair, I did have a question, Charlie, uh, I, I understood that there were some people who came to study this fire because of the tree mortality issue, and I just was wondering, would we be hearing a report back from you about their findings, and then the aftermath? I'm, I am very curious about that, because there's a lot of information out there being said, oh, you know, dead trees don't necessarily mean more forest fires, but, uh, my recollection in, in the talking with you and others in the fire area is that dead trees present their own problem in terms of not only fire intensities, and how, uh, uh, when you have a crown fire, a firework goes through, and it will kill the trees, but it leaves the bowls of the trees there. Sometimes with dead trees, you've got the whole tree just sort of becoming a giant flame, uh, and the other thing is firefighting itself, the ability of firefighters to get into areas where they have a lot of tree mortality. So, I, I, I'm very curious to know kind of the aftermath of this in terms of the evaluation, uh, how this fire performed in this situation, what we might anticipate in the future, given the, the way the state of Nevada looks right now.
We'll get that data for you when it's available. Um, ironically, about day seven in there, they had the team from DC that was doing some of this study, and basically, it was explained to me that it would be like the Blair Witch Project video at this point. There were too many hazards out in front of the fire to plant the equipment. So, I thought, okay, well, that, that's good to know, uh, perhaps starting on another flank would be helpful. So, um, once we get that in place, uh, because there are so many other mortality fires that we've had this summer, um, so I, I don't think it went to plan with what they had on this incident, but there is gonna be data available.
You know, I also like to point out that without the air support that we now have, which we did not have 10 years ago, those planes were relatively small, the, uh, Bore bombers out of Porterville, but with the size of the equipment that we have, and the number of, uh, air, uh, assets, we, California was pretty much able to keep a lot of this in control, not only on our fire, but all over the state because of that air support.
Supervisor Grant. Uh, Mr. Chair, I just, I know there hasn't been many forest fires in the district I represent, but I do want to, uh, compliment, uh, Chief Norman in, in our fire, uh, department. I know that forest fires don't happen very often, uh, in our county, um, this is, uh, the second major, uh, firefight, or fire, and we're fortunate that we haven't had many more, uh, but I want to compliment you because it's not something that you get a ton of practice on, but your crews did a fantastic job, and, and like the others have mentioned, um, the leadership and the, and the, the training were all put to good use, um, and we saved a lot of lives and, uh, definitely a lot of, uh, structures and communities in our, uh, United States forest ground, so, great job, chief.
Supervisor Cox.
One quick comment, and then a, a question for you, Charlie. First off, thank you for keeping all the forest fi- forest fires out of District 3. We appreciate that. And then, uh, you know, what I haven't heard, is this, are we completely extinguished? No more burning, this fire is done, mopped up?
Well, I have a three-part response to that. It's 100% contained. When Mr. Coyne and Kiri Martinez and I went up to a community meeting in Posey, a couple of the Extra Help firefighters, hey, we've got a fire! Oh, okay, all right. So let's, we go up there and we're going to have hotspots inside the burn area until it snows. So 100% extinguished, no. Contained, yes.
Thank you. But that's an ugly area to fly over right now, isn't it? As far as you've got trees still, didn't get burned, you've got a mess. We still got a problem even though it's burned.
And this tree mortality is going to be with us for a while, so, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for all your efforts. Thank you, Mr. Spada, for your efforts too over at our Emergency Services. Does this, does this have to do with?
Thank you, Ms. Crane.
This isn't an action item, is it?
No.
Okay. Let's move on to item number 20, Rest of Human Health and Services Agency to ratify an order of the Director of Emergency Services on September 19th, 2018. Lift the evacuation order.
Excuse me, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Spada and Ms. Bells Lang. I'm here before you today to provide a brief overview of the, first of all, the summary for the incident costs for the Cedar Fire. And then also, there's a number of cleanup activities that we're asking the Board's ratification on relating to actions taken by the Director of Emergency Services in the last days of the incident, terminating the local emergency, and also requesting the submission for the Fire Management Assistance Grant. And that includes the request, the assurances, and also the resolution going forward. So I will be as brief as I can, but feel free if you have questions while I go through it. It's always hard to condense a lot of financial information into a short presentation, so I tried to highlight what I felt the key points were. Year-to-date, we're estimating the response costs for the Cedar Fire to be at $814,033. And when you look through what those different factors are, your largest share of cost is your fire, understandably, and what you would expect, at $625,437. That represents roughly 77% of the costs for the incident. There were other costs that were spread across multiple departments, the Board of Supervisors, County Administrative Office, Auditor, District Attorney, Health and Human Services, the Sheriff's Department, Purchasing, and Information Technology. Those base, some of them were smaller, whereas like District Attorney allowed us use of their PIO to make sure we had coverage through the EOC. Others were much more extensive, certainly the Sheriff Operations, making sure they're enforcing the evacuations, manning some of the road closures, Resource Management, setting up those road closures, Health and Human Services with response at our, the actual human sheltering and animal sheltering in addition to staffing. So those costs do vary. What I would highlight here, and I will go into a little more depth on, is a large portion of the costs of these other departments are costs that essentially were already budgeted and they were being utilized through exempt personnel. So, for example, I'll use Health and Human Services. We had a fair number of staff assigned to the EOC, staff that were in the field. If those were exempt personnel, they're not accruing overtime, they're already a full-time position that we've budgeted for. So essentially, you're not, you're not going to see a new cost outside of what was already budgeted and accounted for. So when I start to talk about what the general fund impact is, I'll break out the section of what would have been normal costs versus non-recurring extraneous costs for this incident, because I think that's an important distinction. In terms of what we expect our reimbursement from, we know that the Fire Management Assistance Grant, or FMAG, was approved in August 22nd. So early into the incident, the Feds, FEMA, approved that. That was significant for us because that gives us 75% cost share with the federal government, and that really is a huge revenue source for a lot of the departments across the board, not just fire. That's initiated by the state, and then it will cover eligible costs, and that's an important consideration. So that's going to cover emergency response costs. It doesn't, it doesn't cover what would be those permanent work. If someone's already assigned to these types of duties and they're not accruing additional costs, then it wouldn't cover that. That's already considered something that we've budgeted and is not an extraneous incident cost. It also includes sheltering and evacuations, animal evacuations, barricading, public information dissemination, and the extraordinary EOC costs. And lastly, that would be extraordinary personnel costs, equipment use, repair and replacement, tools, materials, supplies, mobilization and demobilization activities. So the, getting that FMAG funding was a significant piece for us. The other source of funding comes through the California Fire Assistance Agreement, and that's the mutual aid requests across the fire departments within the state and some of the state-run Fire, Cal Fire. And that provides 100% reimbursement for those types of costs that are assigned through the, the incident command. The, sorry, that was all I had on that piece. I'm going, looking at the estimated reimbursement. When we look at it from FMAG, we expect $240,843. From the CFAA, we expect $307,459, which gives us a total revenue that we expect back or reimbursement coming back of $548,302. That represents at this point about a 67% cost recovery if you look at the total costs that we estimated or consumed resources. When I break down that reimbursement for you a little more closely, and this is where I want to make sure I highlight those recurring versus extraordinary costs. Our total cost at $814,033. We know our estimated reimbursement is approximately $548,302. When we look at that, then, the net result is an estimated general fund impact of $265,732. When we break apart those categories, $185,451 of that represents costs that were essentially budgeted already, and the bulk of that is not in your fire, but in your HHSA, Sheriff, CAO, purchasing, all of those departments that were providing support through their existing personnel and staff and not assigning additional resources, incurring heavy overtime. The remainder, $80,281, represents the local share of the cost for, for that. That would be a true extraordinary net county cost that's not recoverable. Because the FMAG funds do require that 25% reimbursement, it's going to include that and any unreimbursed or uncompensated additional charges that were ineligible for any of the other funding sources. We have requested, as an additional item, the Governor to grant California Disaster Assistance Act, or CDAA, funds. That has a potential additional revenue for us of $61,444. What that essentially does is you have your 75% that FMAG picks up, then you have your 25%. Well, now, the CDA would cover the 75% of that remaining 25%, so essentially, your share cost comes down to 93.25%. It would be great to get it, it's significant. The issue we're going to have is historically, we're below the threshold for total incident costs for receiving it. The, what they do is they have a formula that's based on per capita, and so you look at it, the per capita incident cost, depending on which population estimate they use, approximately $3.57 per capita. That puts, the incident cost would have to be about $1.6 million for it to qualify for those CDAA funds, which is why I say we've requested it, we're providing the information to the state, but at this point, I wouldn't expect that we would receive it. It would be a bonus for us at this, at this juncture. Are there any questions on any of those cost reimbursement breakdowns? The next step in the process, then, tomorrow, we have a meeting with the Cal OES, with also Bakersfield, or sorry, Kern County EOC or OES, and also our OES. That's a required meeting for the FMAG. That's where we can get our questions answered, make sure we're compiling all the information that Cal OES wants before they submit for reimbursement for the feds. So we expect to be narrowing down the scope of what, what they're asking for and what we need within the next 15 to 30 days. They set the window, the state does, it could be up to 90 days is what the state usually wants. The feds allow up to 120 days, but I think we're not looking at anything that, that long and drug out. I would expect a much shorter timeline for being able to get everything turned in and get the reimbursement sent back to us. So with that, there are a couple of requests before the Board. The first is ratify an order by the Director of Emergency Services on September 19th, 2016, to lift the mandatory evacuation order of Spear Creek Summer Homes. The second is to proclaim the termination of the local emergency due to the Cedar Fire in Tulare County that was initiated on Resolution 2016-0711. Three, authorize the submittal of the request for Fire Management Assistance Subgrant and the project assurances for federal assistance for the Cedar Fire. This is essentially the cover sheet to submit for the grant. It's not the entire grant at this point. These are providing our assurances that you would see standard with these types of requests for reimbursement and advanced documentation they want. And lastly, authorize the Chairman of the Board to sign three copies of the attached designation of applicant's agent resolution to appoint authorized agents to act on behalf of the county in securing and administering the grant funds. And this part really boils down to when we're submitting the grant documentation to the state, being able to certify these expenditures, send those forward. Certainly, we can bring it back to the Board then at that point to show kind of, here's what ultimately we recovered, and also provide an update on what happens with the CDAA funding request.
Jim, did we lose some homes in that Spear Creek area?
We did. I think Charlie might best answer exactly where the homes lost were at this point.
Yes, there were a few cabins, handful of cabins.
Yes, there were five cabins lost and seven outbuildings.
Thank you. Supervisor Worley?
I just wanted to comment, you know, first off, it was an emergency. So it's an extraordinary event, extraordinary effort by all of our people. And then to keep track of all this, I mean, we're looking at a very high level, here's the numbers, here's what we, and it's all really great news. You think about being able to cover the vast majority of this expense to our county treasury is, is really significant.
I have nice spreadsheets that I figured the Board did not want.
Well, I mean, and I just wanted to commend your staff and all the people who are engaged in this because I know there's a tremendous amount of effort to bring it to this nice, simple presentation, which is very clear, understandable. But the amount of work that had to be done to bring all that together is really commendable. I just wanted to thank everybody for working very hard on bringing this together because that's, that's really, I mean, there's the emergency, there's fighting the fire. This is not as glamorous, but from a budgetary standpoint, very important, obviously, to this county and the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Tim.
Well, I appreciate that, and I know my, first of all, OES team, the Fire Documentation Specialist, and the HHSA Accounting, in particular, Jessica Guzman, who is our primary person for this, appreciates that. It has been a definite learning experience for us, and it's nice to see how all of it fits together, where documentation is important because then we can track time spent against payroll records and really have a clean paper trail.
Supervisor Cox?
You know, what was, I think, done really well, and I don't think has been done as well as this in the past, is the communication. The communication from those that were on the line, that those were in the Emergency Operations Center were great. I didn't feel like I needed to be in anybody's way, so stayed away. And the communication was wonderful, it was top-notch. I literally think Charlie was sitting in a foxhole with a fire burning around him, and he was texting us what was, what was going on. But, and it was, communication, top-notch. I think that's the, the standard we ought to shoot for when we have an event like this, is that we're kept up to date, you know, literally, sometimes two, three times a day. So thank you for that.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
You know, just one comment, great job to the HHSA finance team and to all the administrative personnel that were involved. You know, this is, it's great that it's going to come down to be such a high recovery of the cost, but in my opinion, it's very unfortunate. I'll actually throw a bone in the state of California, the federal government should be picking up the entire cost of this because this is their responsibility area, and they do not do their job in managing their resources, managing the property that they own. And so we are left to deal with the catastrophes that can happen on those grounds that are certainly magnified because of the lack of their presence and the lack of responsible ownership on their part. I'll just make that point.
Supervisor Sheeda?
When I went by the OES Command Central, what impressed me was not only all the agencies that were there, but we had a financial team there. And in years past, we had an emergency, I don't think we had the personnel sitting there to figure out all the costs. We established this center many years ago in Farmersville with the Fire Department, where they're located, as a result of flood. And surprisingly, we go the circle from floods to fire, and hopefully...
Freeze, don't forget freeze.
And hopefully, we go back to the flood. So my hat's off to everybody that participated.
Yeah, it was a greater, it was a greater, it was a bad event, but a great event in the fact that we didn't lose more structures too. So, great job.
If there's nothing else, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of all the requested items on our, on the sedentary.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Sheeda. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Thanks for the report. Good report. Okay, let's move on to item number 21, Transit Operations Maintenance Facility Project Report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. CAO, Ms. Bells Lang. I'm Reed Shanky with the Resource Management Agency. Today, I wanted to bring forth a project status update on our transit operations and maintenance facility, or as we lovingly refer to it, as our Tommy Project. We're at an important stage in the process here where we wanted to give you the status of where we are and give you an opportunity to provide us with some feedback on how we should proceed. Three main points of the presentation that I'd like to go over today is the status update of our project, how that project fits into the overall scheme of what's going to be done at the central road yard, in conjunction with there's some fire facilities and some other facilities that will be installed out there. One feature of our project is that we'll be installing sort of the main backbone infrastructure, a new water well, some sewer facilities, and some roads that would be utilized by all those other users out there. And then third, we'd respectfully request that we set up an ad hoc committee consisting of a few members of the Board of Supervisors so that we can meet and go over some of these items in a bit more detail and specificity. Why are we doing this project? Our Tommy Project basically results out of the need for a new transit facility. We currently share the Transit Operations Center with the City of Visalia, and that's been a very good relationship for us. I think frankly, we've got a pretty good thing going, but both systems foresee the need in the future to expand. but both systems foresee the need in the future to expand, and we don't really see the opportunity for growth there that we would like to as we look into the future for the training. So, providing more room for TCAT growth, the new facility will allow for greater independent control and efficiency, and ultimately, has been part of the Tulare County Central Road Yard Expansion Master Plan. So this is something that's been in the works for a while, and we're really getting down to the nuts and bolts of actually building this project. Over probably the last five or six years, we've been cobbling together a series of different funding allocations for our aspect of the Tommy project. We've currently got about 10, a little over 10 and a half million, and we've identified about nine million of those funds for construction, the remaining being for design, construction, engineering, outfitting the facility and whatnot. There's a number of different funding sources here, they're all really transit-related funding, so there's no general fund impact with this project that we're proposing. Some of these funds are in our account currently, some of them are on a reimbursement basis, but they are primarily transit-related funds. So you can see, we've got some PTMI-SEA and LTF, which are state and federal funds, state transit assistant funds, there's a CMAC portion here, a small Mezurar match to that CMAC portion, which would be for our CNG facility, and then through Cal OES, some Prop 1B security enhancement monies for security features within the site. We've been working on this project for a while, so some of the background, we do have a conditional use permit for the overall site master plan in place, so that is completed, CEQA has been done, and we've completed our preliminary schematic design, so we are at the stage now where we're really narrowing down the final details. The plans would be to have that final design completed, stamped and signed in January of the coming year, and then to construct for about a year, starting in summer of 2017, and then actually moving into and beginning to utilize the facility in the summer of As I said, we've got about $9 million available for funding of the construction of the project, and the overall site with full buildout, with all the bells and whistles that we would ultimately like to get to, we're estimating at about $20 million, so clearly, there's a shortfall there. So, the strategy that we've worked out is to phase the construction of the project, and we feel that we can probably get 80 to 90 percent of the usability of the facility within the first phase, which we've budgeted for about that $9 million of construction. So we are taking into mind the ultimate goal of the facility, and in the next few slides, I'll go over some of the details of that phasing. But we're allowing for the flexibility of the future expansion. We feel that this Phase 1 will ultimately achieve our short-term goals for the TCAT system, and we are planning to allow those latter phases to adapt for future evolving transit technologies. We current, for example, we currently run a CNG fleet, and as transit systems and technology changes, there may be opportunities to change our fueling or our energy uses out there. But again, this is Phase 1 that we were talking about, and will require future phases to attain kind of that ultimate goal. So this diagram here shows in kind of the gray and then the labeled areas, what we plan to construct with Phase 1. So the primary features are that, and they're not really shown here because they're off-site from this exhibit, and later, I'll zoom out and show you where we're talking about, but all the utilities will go in. So we're installing a new well that will be constructed and useful for all of the other entities that use the central road yard out here, new sewage, seepage pond, seepage pits, site security, roadways, those things will all be installed. But the primary aspect is the maintenance building there, these are the bus bays where the work will be actually performed. There's three bays here that we're proposing, it's the shop area, it's the area for the employees to use the restrooms, changing rooms, that sort of thing. The gray area would be the paving work, the site work that we would be doing, so it's parking spaces, it's the parking spaces for the bus pullouts over on the right-hand side, kind of on the angles. And then the CNG slow fill, this is where the buses refuel overnight, so they pull in, get parked, connected to the CNG system, and then over time, they're refueled, so when they're needed, the next morning, they're ready to go. Some landscaping and other kind of miscellaneous areas would be included with this Phase 1 here. So what would we be doing with Phase 2 is shown here. The next important probably aspect is the administration building, which you can see kind of located below where that maintenance facility is. And what we're proposing to do is, in the interim, use mobile facilities, trailer-mounted offices, either through purchase or rent, and we're still looking at kind of what's most economical to do at that point. And these would be kind of two construction-type trailers that we would locate on-site, and that would house the dispatch and the other two or three administrative personnel of the site that we need at current times. So with Phase 2, we would be constructing that administration building, it would abut directly to the maintenance facility. The other items would be the fast fill CNG, so this is in, I guess, complement to the slow fill, this is a location where the buses can pull up and fuel within 30 seconds to a few minutes depending on their needs, very similar to a normal gas station fill. And then over on the right-hand side would be a wash building, this is a pull-through bus wash, so that as needed, when the buses pull through and park for the night, they can run through that bus wash facility. There are other opportunities outside of constructing on-site, we can utilize through a negotiated agreement with the city of Visalia for bus washing and whatnot, but one very feasible alternative that we plan to be using is just washing on-site with a power washer. So it's not something that needs to be done every day, but it is something that we would like to plan for in the future. This one is, so the first site, the first phase, I talked about about $9 million of construction estimate, this phase is about $6 to $7 million of additional construction. And Phase 3, this would sort of round out the ultimate goal of our facility. This is another, it's between $5 to $6 million of estimated costs, and it would include additional bus parking for future expansion off to the right there, a oil, lube, and vacuum station or island south below the bus wash facility there, so as needed, the buses could pull through, have their oil levels changed or checked, air pressure in the tires checked, vacuum out the inside of the facility. So it's kind of creating efficiencies for the system, but it's more of a would like to have than a have-to-have type item here. And then we would be allowing for future expansion of the maintenance bays off of the existing building that would be there at the time.
Reed, I'm curious, you've identified different phases, have you also identified timeframes for those phases?
It ultimately depends on funding, and so it's taken about five or six years to kind of put together the $9 million here, and so assuming similar levels of funding that we could achieve there, I would expect probably within that range to at least get the first, the second phase done, and then maybe another few years after that for the latter years.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a question that I have, have you identified any, Reed, any partners or any other sources of revenue that could potentially help accelerate this build-out? Are there any other transit agencies in the county that could potentially use this?
The one that we're reaching out to is actually the city of Tulare. We're not sure, we haven't really gotten any feedback yet from them if they would want to partner with us on this, but that is something that we're looking at. And then also potentially other private users, maybe waste management or something like that, that would be an opportunity.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, so glad you're looking at that.
About Mezurar funds, are there any Mezurar funds? I know part of it is transit, so.
There are some Mezurar funds on this project already, it's a fairly small amount, a couple hundred thousand dollars, I believe, that would be a match for our federal CMAC funds.
Chair, how many do you know, Reed, how many of the maintenance bays does the city of Visalia have?
I believe they have six right now, and we're using half of those.
Okay, because that's, you know, we're roughly a third of the buses that are there, or less than a third of the buses that are there at that yard, so when I think about the build-out of this one Supervisor Wordley, I'm thinking we're several years out before you need to expand, and have ideas about the expansion, but next one, how much is the, is the road yard, how much of the road funds do you have planned? I didn't see that planned into this, they're going to benefit from the well, probably 50 percent of the well is going to be theirs, is there road funds in this as well? I didn't see.
That's correct. So currently, the funding that we have doesn't include any of, call them the outside agency funds, that would be, we would hope to be able to assist us with those utility costs, and the primary reason there is our transit funds are designated specifically for transit uses. So we want to eliminate the possibility that the auditors would come back and say, hey, you're using transit funds to install utilities that everyone else is using, so as part of our ad hoc committee meeting, we would like to have those discussions with the other entities that would be using those facilities.
Thanks.
So here's our proposed schedule for the design, I've mentioned the ad hoc committee here, we're respectfully proposing October 3rd is the first one, and the critical path item here is, that we're really aiming for, is that plan check submittal on December 22nd, Merry Christmas to the plan builders who would be reviewing that. The reason for that is, the end of the year triggers the point where new building codes take place, so we're trying to get, we've been designing to current building codes, and we want to get that plan check submittal taken care of so that we're operating under current building codes. We believe that with these new building codes coming in at the new year, there would be somewhat substantial, significant added costs with probably no real benefit to the building there, so we want to get that in this year. So that kind of working backwards sets the dates for some of these other items, and we feel that these are achievable dates that we can meet. The second item is, as we've just briefly touched on, how this project fits into the overall site of the central road yard. You're probably aware, there's current numbers of users out there, space-wise, one of the biggest is RMA Roads, but we do have the motor pool, animal control, Agriculture Commissioner is out there using the site too. And then the future additional users is obviously transit, like we're talking about, fire department is planning a fire station just south of the location on the site, so there's a bit of coordination that we would, that we still want to talk to you about, particularly as it relates to the utilities. The existing well that's out there, that all the users are sharing, is pretty much at the end of its functional life, we've been band-aiding it together thus far, and it seems to be working okay, but we're all aware that it needs replacement, so this new well that's going in as part of our project will be able to be sized to serve all of those facilities, as will the tank, the septic treatment, the storm drain facilities. So like we identified, there is a need for cost-sharing of that utility development. One of the questions that we've come up with is, we know that the fire station is going out there, and we've been in discussions, and we believe that there's a training facility going out there, but the original master plan also identified a 911 dispatch center, fire admin buildings, and those were all taken care of or planned prior to the Cigna building acquisition, so that's kind of changed things around a little bit. And as we go through the process, we want to make sure that our utility infrastructure would accommodate whatever we decide will be used out there, done out there, so we want to have that conversation with the committee, with the group, so that committee would include people from the fire department, from HHSA, and so that we can kind of determine what those future uses might be, so we can make sure that we accommodate for that. Here's the aerial photograph of the site, so obviously, the north half is existing users, it's roads off to the west, and then motor pool, and then animal control, and then the ag commissioner there. The south side is where all the undeveloped areas, and that's where the development will go. So in sort of cartoon fashion, here's the users, these are the existing folks, the green is what we're proposing the Tommy project to look like, and then off to the right is the new infrastructure, the utilities, the red there is the fire station that we know is going to happen. We are pretty sure that a fire training center, we're not exactly sure what that looks like, but we want to make sure that we accommodate for that. And then the old master plan, as I said, located this fire admin warehouse and 911 center, but we're pretty sure that's going to go away, so we want to identify what will be used out there and make sure, like I say, we can accommodate for that. And then the third item is establishing this ad hoc committee. Like I say, we want to give you an opportunity to provide us with some feedback and direction, so what we're proposing is have that meeting on October 3rd, if it's available to everyone, and then come back to the board, I believe, in mid-November to kind of give a summary of where we're at with that committee and how we plan to proceed. We want to confirm that we're in, going in the right directions with this Tommy phasing, and the priorities for the future phases, we want to make sure that we do coordinate that master plan, make sure all the utilities are integrated properly, discuss the future potential users of the site. And then we want to go over some of the specifics, the architectural details of the Tommy, make sure that we're not building the Taj Mahal or just the tent in the backyard, but that we're going in the right direction as far as costs allocated for things like finishings and furnishings, and then provide any other additional guidance or support as we determine is of value. With that, a few requests, I won't read them all, but it's basically establish the ad hoc committee, appoint two members of your board to that committee, and then help us pick the date that is available if you've got your calendars handy, and then if there are any other direction for us.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Supervisor Cox to serve on the ad hoc committee, I think he will definitely represent the tent in the backyard side of the budget spectrum very well, and he's also the transit expert.
And I would definitely recommend Supervisor Vanderpoel to represent the Taj Mahal side of the board supervisors.
Well, since you guys are already in that position, I think it's only, yes Supervisor Wordley.
I have a question, Reed. You mentioned something which kind of caught my attention, and that's the changing building code requirements, and I note that the next phase is the administration space. Has any numbers been put to that? Because my thought is, would it be better to go ahead, would we be, would we be, would we be well off, thank you Steve, to look at even perhaps borrowing funds to build it, depending on how much of a greater expense will be to build it later on, I mean, building it now rather than putting it off till later if it's going to cost a significant amount of money? And the other part of that is an analysis of, it would seem to me, there's a fundamental benefit to having your administrative staff on the site, and so what is the value that you put to that? So if they're there, operating on the site with the other staff that works in that department, what are the cost benefits that come with that? So I just wondered about whether we would want to expedite that part of the project.
So to the first question, I don't believe that we've got a specific number for what the cost difference between the two building codes would be, I would guess it would be a few percentages of difference, so probably not that substantial, but enough that we do want to definitely get in under this building code, and there would be some changes to the design that we're already proceeding with, so that would kind of take us back a step if we weren't able to do that.
Any analysis on that latter part as far as the benefit of having the administrative staff on-site?
Definitely. So when we're talking about the administration building, we're actually referring to our contract operator, which currently is MV Transportation, and then we'll be going out to a new contract potentially in the near future here. So that would be their staff that would be on-site, and our plan is to bring in portable structures to allow them to operate there on-site. The county RMA staff is currently out of Government Plaza, and they would continue to operate out of that location.
The one thought I had is, you know, shelled space, when you're building something, you know, you're talking about three bays for, a service base in the future, shelling out, you know, three additional bays and not putting anything in there except maybe floor drains is going to cost you pennies on the dollar to do it now, so I mean, and I think that are thoughts, other thoughts can come out during the ad hoc meetings, but you know, I'm thinking ahead like that as well, what if you shell space, what would a shelled space cost?
It's a good thing you're on the committee.
As well as...
Chairman, I would like to move approval of this matter with the two folks who have identified themselves as being the board representatives.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Wordley, second by Supervisor Shida. Cast your votes, votes unanimous, thank you, good report.
Thank you.
Good report.
And real quick, before we move on, I think we were supposed to give directions to the availability of our calendars as well, I think that we tentatively, I look... to the availability of our calendars as well, I think that we, uh, tentatively, I looked at the October 3rd date, and I believe as long as it's in the, in the afternoon, we can go ahead and get something scheduled.
Afternoon.
Early, early afternoon, if you can get something scheduled, you can go ahead and plan on using myself and Supervisor Cox. Thanks.
Utilize them well. Okay, thank you, let's move on to item number two, space improvement and relocation program. Mr. Hess.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spata, Ms. Bales Lane, John Hess, WCAO, here to do a presentation regarding the space improvement and relocation program. So the presentation will include a program background, discussion regarding the current status of Phase One, Phase Two, proposed relocation alternative discussion, Phase Three, future improvements, as well as conclusion and requested action. So the county is currently undertaking a countywide space improvement relocation project due to the vacancies at the former Office of Education buildings, as well as the acquisition of the Teleri Acres Professional Center, also known as the Cigna Building, earlier this calendar year, so we are relocating the Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department, as well as the HR Department, Council Risk Management, and Council CWS, as well as the District Attorney in a future phase. So as with the previous presentation, we do have an ad hoc committee, that committee met several times, was very hands-on, had site visits, looked at plans, cost estimates, and their work resulted in a reasonable project scope as well as extensive project savings. The members were Supervisors Vanderpool and Supervisors Cox, the CAO, Deputy CAO and the county building official advised the process, and then the department heads were integrated throughout the entire process, our architects, DKJ Architects, were providing the plans and the documents, and they were amazing at delivering that stuff on time, and just incredibly impressive the speed that they produce their documents. Due to, this is a very large project, there's a lot of volume to this project, and so due to its size, we have broken it into three phases, Phase One is the Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, Human Resources and Council, the project we've been working on for the last few months, and a project that we're looking, going to bid presently for, Phase Two are those departments at Government Plaza, the former Office of Education building, and the courthouse at space made available therein, Phase Three would be looking at a co-located dispatch center, as well as emergency operations center, for further analysis. So Phase One, what we are doing today is requesting authorization to go to bid for construction, the bid is engineered such that there are four bid summittals, one for each project location, plus one aggregate bid, there is one project alternate in the Human Resources building, and that is in the old planetarium part of the building, to see if we can perhaps get some good pricing, competitive pricing on that particular component of the project. We did evaluate local preference criteria to be utilized for this project, and Council has advised, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to incorporate it, public contract code is pretty restrictive with respect to evaluating lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and so we have to rely primarily on pricing for that purpose. We are suggesting conducting a program review committee at the bid opening, so we can get a hands-on evaluation of the bids for the, for the committee members. The cost estimate as presented here is for the construction associated with Phase One, that is just under two million, and that is extensively lower than what we were looking at originally, so those are incredible project savings, and the committee has resulted in a really reasonable, doable project scope, this does not include furniture and cubicles and so forth, which I have, I'll show an overall, uh, presentation budget in a, in a few slides here. So the project schedule, as we've, we have tried to evaluate and cut as much as possible out, it's, uh, it's presented here, going to publication next week, opening bids October 27th, come back to the board for award of a contract, provided all the bonds, insurances, and things of that nature are, uh, in place and are appropriate, they would have ten days to then begin construction, at which time they would proceed with the two projects, the Cigna project and the HR project concurrently, council would begin thereafter, and then the relocations would begin as soon as the, as soon as the projects are completed. So regarding Phase Two, so now jumping into Government Plaza, courthouse, and the old Office of Ed building on the south side of Burl, we've looked at a variety of different options and iterations in order to create the greatest cost benefit to the county, and one thing that we are proposing presently is to alternatively look at moving IT to Government Plaza, where space becomes available after the Sheriff's Office moves out, as well as relocating the General Services, Capital Projects, and Solid Waste Departments to the former Office of Education building on the south side of Burl, so kind of moving the pieces around a little bit, what that does, it kind of creates a lot of system savings in the overall project, for a number of reasons, one, we are able to distribute or share the cost of the IT move to Government Plaza to identify departments therein, as well as the cost to improve the Office of Education building would be significantly less intensive, require quite a bit less infrastructure, and less space, there, those two departments are quite a bit smaller than, than IT would require, so a lot less of the building to be improved, a lot less, uh, extensive improvement, so just a lot of savings all around, IT would continue to be housed within one location, which is great for their management purposes, and, uh, General Services, Capital Projects would be located closer to the CAO's office, which benefits me anyways, I guess.
Mr. Chair, while he's on that, um, are you talking about the west end of that building? Because that building's kind of split, it's not split in half, but it's split, you have the big atrium area, then you have the area to the west that is a smaller, and I'm thinking that's, I'm just thinking, because I haven't talked to you, that that's the area you're talking about moving these folks.
That's absolutely correct, so the building, it's about twenty-eight thousand square feet, our department, my, uh, General Services and Solid Waste would only need about eight thousand, that top floor there where the Office of Ed housed their administration, it fits that bill, it's eight thousand square feet, houses just enough people for our purposes, so the rest of the building can be utilized for future expansion, storage, or meeting rooms, things of that nature, without having to jump in there whole, you know, fully right now.
So you're talking about the west end of the building, or the east end?
I believe, I suppose it's the east end towards, if you walk into the atrium to the left.
So the east end where the admin, the, the TCO admin was, you're talking about the east end upstairs?
Yes.
And what about elevators for that?
We, and the benefit of having it over there is there's a perimeter entrance and exit towards the parking lot, we've done some analysis, we could do, the fall is too great right now for ADA purposes, but much like we're doing over the HR building, we can re-engineer that ramp, and so that becomes the entrance without having to do any kind of escalators, elevators, or interior access improvements at all.
Great, thanks.
John, before you move off of that, so then you, you mentioned the fact you're only going to occupy about one-third of the building, if that, so the other two-thirds, at this point, is this sort of up in the air, or is what that would be used for?
We would, yes, we could identify it for future use, kind of what Supervisor Cox was indicating, there's a, a number of split levels in that building, and there aren't any stairs or elevators, it's a ramp that kind of runs around the outside of the atrium, so it presents some access challenges, perhaps it's more, you know, as funding becomes available, that's something we can look at as future phases, but presently, our idea would be, use it for future expansion, or storage, or meeting rooms, for the time being.
What a change.
So regarding the budget for Phase Two, the committee efforts did result in extensive project savings, which has created sufficient funding to complete all of Phase One and Phase Two, our recommendation is to include the furniture fixtures equipment, as well as the cubicles in that project, in which there is sufficient funding for presently, and then the cost of the alternative relocation to be distributed through the Government Plaza occupants. So here's an overall project budget, including the architect's end estimate at this time, as well as projected estimates for the other phases of, parts of Phase Two, kind of jump into the bottom line, and if there are any specific questions, we can look at that too, jump at the bottom line is the total is five point six right now, on an available funding resources of six and a half, which is in Capital Projects listed in CIP for this year, which means remaining funds of eight hundred ninety-three thousand, almost nine hundred thousand left over for sufficient needs at Government Plaza, as well as for any Phase Three EOC dispatch center, and as you can see, we've been able to identify funds for cubicles and furniture and fixture, which is not in the construction budget right now, so this is a very, very, uh, we're very positive with this, this is a good, this is a good way of looking at it right now.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question before we get too far off, my, my question is more related to the Phase One project schedule, um, are any of those dates flexible to get the departments moved in, I know that we were shooting for one of the departments and indicated a desire to move in around the end of the holidays, um, any chance of accelerating that project schedule, when, when, if we can focus on some very specific buildings, we could actually accommodate that, I think, because some of the remodeling that is going to be done is minor in that particular building, thoughts?
Yeah, and that was something we, you know, had great discussions about, a lot of discussion about, because perhaps to make it accommodating the needs of the department during their downtime, to make sure it least impacts their business, this is lower than what the original estimate was provided by the architects, we were able to get it down to this, this range, it's possible we could link into it, but at this time, this is as low as the, the architect team and the team was really able to get it down into.
All right, thanks.
So any further questions on Phase One, Phase Two budget table?
I, I just, I see courthouse in there, never heard that word.
The courthouse is where, you know, as IT moves out, there's space that's going to be reallocated, the discussion back, uh, early on was to have the District Attorney absorb, uh, uh, some of that space from the Hyde Building, to save the lease payments there, get them in there, you know, as one location, so I think it'd been some, one of our previous meetings, discussions. For Phase Three, looking at the long-term future, this is the, uh, co-located dispatch center for Sheriff and Fire, as well as the EOC, those are two very sensitive and important functions in the county, of course, and, um, because of their sensitive nature, they have higher building code requirements, what's called essential service requirements, and so to accommodate those needs within a, a building, we've looked at the Teleri Acres building as the current identified future home for that, we would need to identify what the improvements are that would necessarily get them in there, any kind of seismic, any sort of public safety things, any sort of things along those lines that would make sure that they're able to occupy there in the, in the event of a disaster or some catastrophe, they're not going to go offline for those in that time.
So, John, the, uh, the EOC, I thought that we had talked about potentially moving the EOC on a, on a temporary basis, using the equipment that we have currently in Farmersville over to the Acres building, as a, once we go in, I think it's in May, that we're going to locate Fire and Sheriff in that building, we were going to move the EOC at the same time, because otherwise, are we still going to be leasing, uh, space in the Farmersville, uh, building where we are currently located?
Yeah, that's correct.
Amen, all I can say, amen.
So, but that, but that is true, that's what we are doing, so we are, we are going to be fully out of Farmersville, uh, once we move, uh, the fire administration out.
Correct, we can, we will be able to relocate the existing equipment to that open area, that one large classroom in the Cigna Building with, with no major concerns.
Okay, thank you.
And then the savings on no longer leasing the building in Farmersville.
Yeah, that's about a hundred and twenty thousand a year over there in Farmersville.
But, a, a, and, and one other point too I'll make, um, I know that, uh, the city manager and a couple of council members have some real concern about the vacancy of that Farmersville building, um, I know that's not our, our problem, uh, and our, our issue, we, we own this building, we're moving our folks into that, but I just want to make sure that our, our timeframe, uh, and the date we are going to be out of the building is very proactively communicated to, uh, Farmersville, because I knew, know that this is a large chunk of their discretionary revenue, uh, the rent that's generated by this building, so I just want to make sure we're good partners or good neighbors, uh, in letting them know that we're going to be out of there, uh, well in advance.
Mr. Spata?
No, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, we also had mentioned that, you know, we would look at opportunities, if there's something else we need to, to locate in that facility, that whether it's Health Human Services, or whatever, we might be able to assist Farmersville by putting something else in there besides what we currently have.
And, and that's something I talked to him about, so I, I say that, and I'm looking at, uh, HHSA, hopefully, uh, they can scratch their brains and let them know as well.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could comment, we have already begun that evaluation as per prior direction, and we do have a viable opportunity that we are considering, that could be helpful all the way around.
That's great, glad to hear that.
So, really that concludes the majority of the presentation here, so looking at from the highest level, just kind of summarizing what we've talked about, Phase One, the Sheriff, Fire, HR, Council, uh, components of the project, today, if approved, we'd proceed with bid, return back for construction contracts, and then proceed directly into construction, that whole entire package would be done this fiscal year, um, Phase Two, if approved and considered this morning, we would move forward with designing the General Services and Solid Waste and the Government Plaza projects, which we could design concurrently as the Sheriff moves out of Government Plaza, and if General Services and Solid Waste move out of there, that becomes available space to backfill within, uh, for IT and other Government Plaza users, so there'd be some phasing within that phase, so to speak, for all of those different components, um, the General Services and Solid Waste component could be done easily this fiscal year, Phase Three, we would, uh, begin analyzing further any impacts that are necessary to support, in particular, the dispatch center and the other, the other sensitive functions there. So I couldn't proceed further without having an acknowledgements here, of course, the board has been very invested and very supportive of this, in particular Supervisor Vanderpool and Supervisor Cox have been very hands-on and very, uh, we have a lot of gratitude for the amount of time that you've invested in this, the county administrative officer, Mr. Spata, has been very dedicated and very supportive as well to this project, and couldn't have gotten here without all of you, the department participants have been, spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, they've met onsite, they met offsite with our architects, we've had calls multiple times a day, I mean, just a lot of time, a lot of hands-on to this project, of course, our team at General Services and Capital Projects, there are a whole, uh, several dozen people that have helped us get to this point within our department, IT involved every step of the way, and I really do want to make note of DKJ Architects for the impressive and incredibly quick work that they've done over the last sixty, ninety days on this project, is, it, very, very, very impressive, what they've dedicated to this project.
John, real, real quick, before Steve speaks, you speak very fast at times, are you free on Saturday nights?
I do, I do have a, I do have a tendency to speak quickly.
Well, first I wanted to thank Ying and Yang over here for their participation.
So, there are four more requested actions, I'll just go through really quickly, basically first, receive this report, second, authorize the relocation of IT to the Government Plaza, General Services and Solid Waste, the Office of Ed building, approve the plan specs and estimates for Phase One, for, uh, going forward, authorize the advertisement for bid, and set the bid opening for October 27th, which, um, as we've discussed previously, would like to have concurrently a committee meeting, so we can review them on hand at that time.
Good job, John.
I, I just had a quick question, I, I, I think I know the answer, but it was kind of what was and said here today, but my assumption is that the reason we were able to bring this cost way down was because we're not going to be tackling the Department of Ed building, because originally we thought IT was going to the Department of Ed, but it was taking a lot of work because of the condition of the building, have I identified kind of the, the, how, why things got changed and, and the way they have, that this was a more cost effective way.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
If, if I can, what, because my comment was going to be, when we first came into this project, there were placeholders in the budget, and the placeholders were kind of Hail Mary placeholders, they were really high, we looked at all three buildings, and all three buildings on this campus had the exact same number plugged in for electrical, so there, so there were a lot of issues, and we started looking at the details, and walking through the buildings and saying, you know, there's nothing with the carpet here, there's nothing wrong with the walls, we just need paint, uh, over in, uh, the county councils, we're going to leave all the wallpaper on the wall, we're not taking all the wallpaper, so as we started looking at the details, we literally shaved over four million dollars off the cost, just by looking at the details, using common sense, having people like John that were like, all for common sense, yeah, let's use our common sense and get this done, get it done as quickly as we can, and get it done, uh, you know, for the best being for the buck, Dennis Lehman, same thing, took the plans, walked through the building, said, you know what, we don't need to redo this, we don't need to redo that, there's nothing wrong with it, fresh coat of paint, and it's ready to use, so I, I think we, we got about a four million dollar savings, just by using the common sense approach, walking through the buildings with the department heads, with the staff saying, you know, this is good enough, let's don't, let's don't fix it, it's not broke.
The big, the big changeover was the IT, instead of being at Government, at, at the Department of Ed building, is going out to Government Plaza, and I'm assuming there was a cost benefit analysis done there, and that was much more cost effective to do the remodeling out of Government Plaza than it was to do here at the, at the.
That's correct.
And, and my only point of bringing that up is, I fully agree with it, but in some sense, we're kicking this, this can down the, down the road a bit, because we still have twenty thousand square feet of that building that have to be dealt with at some point, whatever that's going to be.
Mr. Spata?
Mr. Chairman, uh, let me thank all the board members for some of their, uh, observations with regard to this matter, and may I say a number of things, first, the ad hoc committee did produce, uh, the kind of synergy that was necessary in order to shave expenses, and to do it in a businesslike fashion, and also to do it in such a way that we can feasibly and effectively accomplish the objectives with regard to the, uh, space planning project, however, there was an intervening variable that occurred recently, and that was HHSA, they stepped forward, and they produced revenue for this project, and when we were looking at the high cost that would be necessitated as a result of installing IT there, HHSA came in, and through a reasonable volume of funding, what, enabled us to save almost a million dollars, now with regard to the future, I, I think there is an opportunity in the future with regard to that building, because a lot of renovation was required, this will give us the time for more strategic planning, as well as the acquisition of more financial resources, to figure out what to do for the future, so we think that in the short term, we're getting the most effective way of, uh, engineering space planning, and still reserving for the future our options to gain funding as well, as well as to do more prudent planning with an ad hoc committee in the future, so this was another success story, and I wanted to say, really, the, the leader with regard to this project was Deputy CAO John Hess, I mean, it was Admiral with regard. it was admirable with regard to his effectiveness with regard to project management. Well done, John.
Thank you.
There you go, John, and you are a fast talker. No, hats goes off to all the body, everybody serves on this ad hoc committee, because that's the thing that keeps this county sound and keeps us saving money. That's what it's all about.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to approve staff recommendations.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Vote unanimous. Thank you. Great report.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the open session of our board meeting. Do we have need for closed session council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. You have items A through F on your board's closed session agenda and addenda, or excuse me, addendum. Item B is off agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for everyone being here this morning.